Called order. Please set pledge flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. This is the December 8th, 2016 Township Hillsborough Public Planning Board meeting. This meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, Sunshine Law. Roll call, please.
Mr. Delkor?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Sarachi?
Here.
Mr. Piesin?
Here.
Mr. Julian?
Here.
Ms. Becarina?
Here.
And Chairman Lepani?
Here. Thank you. First order of business, we have deposition in minutes in your packet. First one dated November 10th, 2016.
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman, are yourself, the Deputy Mayor, Mr. Piesin, and Ms. Becarina.
I'll move the minutes of November 10th, 2016.
Thank you, Ms. Piesin. You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Ms. Becarina?
Yes.
Chairman Lepani.
Yes. Thank you. Next up would be the minutes dated December 1st, 2016, also in your packet.
Eligible members are the Chair, the Vice Chair, the Mayor, the Deputy Mayor, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Piesin, and Ms. Becarina. So I believe everybody, everybody on the dais.
Everybody here, correct. So we have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Ms. Becarina?
Yes.
And Chairman Lepani.
Yes. Okay. We have one resolution on your, on the agenda for today. It is Glengarry, GGRE, 15 PBO4 MR in your packet, minor subdivision and waiver.
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman, are yourself and the Vice Chair. In fact, everybody on the dais except the Mayor.
We have a motion?
I'll make a motion, 15 PBO4, PBO4 MR.
Thank you, Mr. Piesin. You have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Ms. Becarina?
Yes.
Chairman Lepani?
Yes. Okay. We have no special committee reports.
Actually, we have one item before, Mr. Chairman.
I apologize.
Normally, this is an item that would show up on the board's reorganization schedule. Simply doesn't matter, of course. However, we've been scheduling hearings over the last couple of weeks that we don't technically have because we haven't had a schedule for 2017. So it is not against the rules to adopt a meeting schedule now versus on January the 5th. And since we're going to have three people, two people here tonight, asking on three applications tonight to continue into the new year, if we set it down and then somebody changes their mind, it's, you know, so that's why it would recommend that we put the meeting schedule up tonight. This board can vote on it, and if the new board wants to decide to change it during the year, it can.
We'll come to a temporary.
I mean, this is the standard me, this is my 15th, I think 15th or 16th year as board attorney, and this is the standard schedule, first and second, Thursday, business meeting the fourth Thursday, no meetings in August. And the question, I think, being raised by Planning Department is what do you want to do about the reorg meeting in '18, for those of you who are really worried about the reorg meeting in '18?
It's gonna go way out there, huh?
Yeah.
Dave, you got that? We are way, way out there.
I think David's got some travel plans.
There'll be no excuses for anybody missing meetings now. We have it down to the, to the reorg of 2018.
And just, just to explain that, that reorg kind of choice for 2018, you can do the reorg and continue when it, or start any hearings you would like on January 4th. The thought was because it is so close to the Township Committee reorg meeting, you could just have your reorg business on the 4th and then not carry any actual business until January 11th of that year. It occasionally causes issues, people's terms expire, et cetera, and we don't know officially until the Township Committee obviously reorganizes.
Right.
And if we have to get your packets, et cetera. So it's, it's an option, or you can just do it the way you have in the past. On January 4th of 2018, you reorg and you go right into business, or you can split them.
So do we need to decide that, that part of the, of the agenda at this time, too? And then obviously it could be changed? Or just the meetings and the regular meetings?
Believe it the way we have normally done it, which is reorg at 7:00, regular meeting at 7:30, and if the board wants to change it, they can. The reason why we usually adopt the reorg meeting is inevitably somebody forgets to set the reorg meeting, and I've had clients who literally have found out, oh, by the way, we never noticed the reorg meeting, and then all the fun starts from there.
Okay. Thank you. So we would take a, a motion to approve the 2017 meeting schedule that's in front of you with the reorg meeting and the regular meeting scheduled for January 4th of 2018, as done in prior years?
Is the reorg for 2017 on here? I don't see it.
No, it was on, you did it in la, the schedule reorg this year.
Okay.
This would just be for everything after the reorg?
Reorg is January the 5th with a regular meeting right after, and we already have, I believe, an application already scheduled for that night.
So January 5th is a 7:00 PM reorg?
Right. 7:00 PM reorg, 7:30 regular.
Okay. I just, I was looking at the 2017 schedule that's on our sheet, but it didn't?
Yeah.
You know, carve that out.
Do we have a motion for the, to adapt this meeting schedule?
I'll make the motion to move that.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Wait, who seconded?
Mr. Julian.
Mr. Julian.
What are we, what are we adopting?
We're adopting this schedule with the?
The 7 o'clock reorg?
On the January 4th of 2018, the 7 o'clock reorg and?
7 o'clock.
And the regular meeting at 7:30, which can be changed at a later date.
Ready? Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Becarina?
Yes.
And Chairman Lepani?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That also now affirms the scheduling of the Anusi Group meeting for January the 5th, and I'm assuming we will have requests tonight by three applicants to carry their meetings into next year, so.
Thank you, Counselor. It's okay, no special committee reports, so we finished the planning board business. Any business from the floor? Not on today's agenda. Seeing none, moving on. Consideration always none, so we'll move up directly to the first application. That would be Daniel Levatino, file 16 PB13 MRV. Time of decision, January 12th of 17, block 205.05, lot 45, 621 Hillsborough Road, continued from November 3rd, 2016, without further notice. We have a request to adjourn to a date to be determined. Time of decision was January 12th of 2017. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Lisa Liley, and I represent Ms. Levatino on this subdivision application. The last time we were here was back in November, and a couple additional issues arose that the board wanted addressed with respect to the subdivision application. So I'm here tonight to report back to the board on the progress that we've made, and then to also ask for continuance, for completion on one portion of it. We did submit the, the board had requested that a grading plan be submitted within 10 days, which we have submitted. And we also were requested that sampling be conducted on the property. That sampling was conducted last Thursday, but we do not have the results back as of this time. So that's the reason that we request the continuance to the next day. Perhaps that's the January 5th. We hope to have these results back in a week or so. So if that works for the board, we would request that a continuance be granted until that time.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. We have to, now those samples have to be submitted to the EC, correct?
Well, that's a good question. I don't think we discussed that last time as, as a condition, but that could certainly be done. And just to, to follow up, we have received, and Tom Bellinger, the Engineering Department, has received the grading plan, and he's satisfied with it. The Engineering Department was at the site about a week or two ago to supervise the soil sa, the taking of the soil samples, but to date, as was just said, we haven't received any word of the results of the testing. So as soon as we get them, we'll let you know. And if the Environmental Commission wants to see at least the results of the testing, I mean, if, if they're negative, they're negative.
Yeah, I would recommend that you're in front of the Environmental Commission so we could review the samples, because it wasn't, it wasn't brought up at the last meeting any of the issues that are being brought up tonight, in terms of the grading, soil testing, the pile that was there. That was not ever brought up to the Environmental Commission. So I think, in all fairness, I think it would be good to go back there and kind of address those issues.
So that would put us on the February 2nd meeting?
Okay.
For the planning board?
For the planning.
To come back to the planning board.
Would that be?
And for the Environmental Commission, when would, when would that meeting take place?
January.
Or does that, that's, that's in January?
Be the January meeting, yes.
And then we also?
Again, depending on when we get the test results back.
And where should we submit directly to?
To the Engineering Department.
Just to the Engineering Department?
Well?
Or also directly to the Environmental Commission, and then you can?
There was apparently some miscommunication there. Your engineer sent it only to the Engineering Department, the grading plan, but they're supposed to send it to the Engineering Department, our consulting engineer, board engineer, Bill White at Mazer, and to the Planning Department. So it should be three copies. We did finally receive a grading plan directly to the Planning Department. I don't know if Bill White ever got one, but he should get it.
I do have, I believe I have a, the letter of transmittal that was sent directly to Mr. White.
Okay. So just make sure that the soil samples get directly to Bill as well, and to myself, and to Tom Bellinger in the Engineering Department.
And also, I think we asked for your client to be a president at the meeting for some questions we had, that she was going to come this meeting, but I would suggest that she meet at the February meeting.
For the board's application, I spoke to Mr. Singer shortly after the last meeting. We did have a discussion, and I did tell her, did tell him that she wouldn't have to appear until such time, as there was an actual application before the board.
Okay.
So I'll take responsibility for why she's not here to make the request, but since it's only a request to continuance?
No, I went for tonight, but February?
But I did indicate to Mr. Singer, and I understand Ms. Liley's going to have the application, that Ms. Levatino needs to be here. There are questions that were raised by the public and the board relative to some cutting issues and other.
Right.
Sure. Ms. Levatino is happy to be, be available to the board at, at any time for, for the meetings. So when we get the soil samples in, we'll, we'll send them to, to the three departments?
Correct. And we'll set you up with the Environmental Commission.
And we don't have to submit directly to the Environmental?
No, it'd be through, well, you'll have to submit, we'll tell you how many copies you need to submit for the, you, you schedule that through our office, through the planning office.
We'll do.
Now, just, just a note, we're talking February 2nd. We're about to hear in a few minutes that Green Village is also requesting the move to February 2nd. I don't have a problem with both. If the board's okay with that?
I'm okay with that.
Okay. So February 2nd?
So we're, so we're in extension on the time of decision through February, what we got on the sheet?
We're going February 2nd.
Where, where did she put on the sheet? No, nothing? We'd ask for an extension at least, Ms. Liley, till the 28th of February?
Okay. Into February?
Into February, sure.
All right. Okay. We need a motion for that?
Need a motion to carry this meeting without further notice to February the 2nd, 2017, with a time of decision February 28th, 2017, subject to Environmental Commission review prior. If you don't have Environmental Commission review before that, you're going to have to come back on the 2nd for another.
Another continuance?
Yeah. Depending on when the timing is.
I think there's a meeting we're just talking about. I think there might be a meeting on the 9th, but that's for 2017, it's scheduled.
Yeah, well, I'm just. I think the assumption, Neil, is that we're looking at the 23rd meeting for them to appear.
Okay.
If it works out, fine. If it doesn't, it, we'll deal with it.
The, would Ms. Levatino be required to appear at the Environmental Commission meeting? Or I?
It's up to you.
Is that? I, I know she, she is certainly away, she advised, because we were here for a continuance, she is certainly not available the 18th to the 21st. So depending, if you'd like her to appear, we can make arrangements, but during that time, she is traveling for work, so we can figure that out at another time, unless you're inclined to not require her appearance for the Environmental Commission. Whatever you'd like is fine.
I mean, I kind of got the feeling she didn't really know too much about the soil that was put there, so.
No, she, she doesn't. But still, if you, for whatever reason, if you'd like her to appear, you know, we're, we're more than happy to comply, so.
The Environmental Commission is, is January 23rd, that's the date of the meeting.
Okay.
So you have to meet, to make the February 2nd Planning Board meeting, you'd have to get in roughly 10 days before the 23rd with all your?
The sample results?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that she comes to the meeting here. Any questions that we have, I'm sure we can answer.
So she doesn't have to appear at the Environmental?
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
The motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Now, the, just with the, with the, with further notice, that would, that would be okay for the, going out that far?
That's a board call. We advised the neighbors that this one was going to be carried till tonight. Have we heard from any of the neighbors?
Well, there was one here that left knowing that it was going to be pushed out.
Board's call.
I know that there's one, especially one of the neighbors is a, very, has a concern, has expressed a concern. I would feel more comfortable if he was, at least somehow notified.
I think we should notice.
Yeah.
All right. So it's going to require a notice, a new notice. So the motion is to carry this application until February the 2nd with renotice, and a time of decision February 28th of 17.
Very good. Thank you, Counselor. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm like, who's going to do it? Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Becarina?
Yes.
Chairman Lepani?
Yes.
We wake you up? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Next one up, Green Village. Hey, it's, it's fun. File 16 PB12 MJV, TOD 12, 1 of 17, block 141, lot 30, Eastley Side Route 206, highway, adjourned from October 13th, 2016, without further notice. Request to adjourn to February 2nd, 2017, without further notice. Extension for TOD to 331 of 17.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Mike O'Grohanek. I'm an attorney at Moro Savo, Cameron Grant and Shawk. I do represent Route 206 Enterprises LLC in this request. My colleague, Alex Fisher, will be handling that application with Mr. Hybel, and I'm here today to request an extension through March 31, 2017. We've previously submitted our time of extension consent form to the Board Secretary, Deborah Paget. My understanding is that there's been some conflicts with the professionals, so we're just looking to move it to that meeting date.
Michael? Any issues?
We, we did get the extension from Mr. Fisher, so we do have it on file to March 31st.
We're bringing Mr. Hybel out of retirement?
Mr. Hybel is still working for Premier Homes in this application.
Well, okay, because I was advised, at least last night, that he's retiring from Van Cleve at the end of the month, so.
Sort of.
Sort of. Maybe. So the board has afforded a request to carry this matter till, till February the 2nd. As Dave indicated, you already have an execution for time of decision through the end of March.
We have a motion?
With or without notice, folks? This one has not had notice.
This one hasn't come to really anybody. When was the last time it was noticed?
Was adjourned from October 13th without further notice to, to tonight, so it's been, it's been a while.
I think we should notice this also.
All right. Motion is with notice.
Do we have a motion?
I'll move to extend with notice.
Thank you, Mr. Piesin. A second?
Second.
Okay. Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Piesin?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Delkor?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Becarina?
Yes.
Chairman Lepani?
Yes.
The record will reflect the extension with notice as February the 2nd.
Okay. Now, we're up to Chris McAssociates Incorporated, file 14 PB21 MSR, TOD of December 8th of 16, block 152, lot 30, formerly known as block 152, lot 25, 230 Route 206. Previously adjourned from September 10th, 2015, without, until further notice, with renotice. Update on status, time of decision runs through 12/8 of 16.
Mr. Chairman, I'll ask Mr. O'Grohanek to simply enter his appearance, and then I'll put something on the record, and then he can?
Thank you, Board members. Michael O'Grohanek, Moro Savo, Cameron Grant and Shawk, on behalf of Chris McAssociates.
You say it faster than I. As the board will recall, this was an application before the board that has been carried several times over the last several months. And in fact, not several months, it goes back now well over a year. Mr. O'Grohanek's office was advised that the board would like him to appear at the December 1st meeting with renotice to all the surrounding properties. That was unable to be conducted because of illness.
I was sick, I was out.
And it was clear when we found this out that it wasn't going to be able to be done for the December 8th meeting either, so we offered Mr. O'Grohanek, my office, three options. He decided to take door number one, which was the appearance tonight to explain where we are, why we need a continuance, and the possible scheduling of this hearing.
Yeah, so this, actually, actually, I filed this application, or Mr. Hybel did, back in October 15th of 2014, so I understand it's been sitting on your docket for a long time. And when we received a planning review memorandum dated December 31st, 2014, or I'm sorry, it was December 10th, 2014, and I'll read what Mr. Rydell at the time had said. He had said, open quote, "The applicant has applied to NJDOT for a secondary access permit. The subject of the current application, that permit is pending and has not yet been approved or disapproved. Township staff have been in contact with various New Jersey DOT staff regarding this application. The applicant in December of 2000 was aware of the NJDOT intention to pursue the Valley Road spur connector at this location, anticipated the 206 widening and meeting median buffer divider on Route 206. Township staff are concerned that as those state DOT initiatives continue to move forward, that not only will the applicant's proposed exit, not only will the applicant's proposed exit driveway, but also the parking claimed by applicant in the, in the 2000, December 2000, as being unnecessary, but subsequently installed by applicant will interfere with the state plans for this segment of the UO, the Route 206, known as section 15M. It is the staff's opinion that any affirmative action by the planning board should only occur after NJDOT provides A, written communication to the township approving the applicant's driveway, and B, identifies what effect this driveway onto Route 206 at an existing signalized intersection would have on DOT's intentions for the segment of the Route 206, section 15N." Therefore, we've just been requesting extensions. I, I was informed, I talked to Mr. Hybel, I talked to Gary Dean at Dean &amp; Dolan, our traffic engineer for this and the, and the Green Village subdivision, or Green Village application. They had, they met with, I believe he said, almost 20 members of NJDOT came to the site, and they, as of yesterday, they approved the as-built for that intersection. They've taken over control of it, they released the bonds, and they've told us that we should have a decision within about 50 days. We've been basically informed they want to see what Green Village does to that intersection. So they don't have any deadlines to answer our application, so instead of wasting this board's time with, with this application, since it's so core to the DOT jurisdiction and intersection at, at section 15N, we ask that it be adjourned. We certainly don't have any problem with moving forward this application if the board so prefers, and just have the approval contingent on that outside approval. But given that, you know, we might as well wait for the DOT approval instead of going through a night of hearings. But it's really up to the board, and I have no problem with whatever the board desires.
Michael? David, I'm sorry.
Mike. Mike, apparently you're Mike. You're David. I'm Mike today. For the record.
You're Patrick, he was last week. He's Michael. You're Patrick.
All right, so I'm a little unclear on what you're requesting. Are you requesting to just further continue it?
Yes.
Okay. Now, you're not saying you want to withdraw the application?
No, we don't want to withdraw it. I mean, you know, we just pursuant to the directive that we received back in December 10th of 2014, I just think it makes sense to wait for DOT to say yea or nay on this application. I am not all that confident, you know, that it'll be decided in 50 days.
Neither am I.
But, you know, it's out of my control, and, and I know that the DOT had concerns about this intersection, and I think they want to see the, the real impact of this development as it gets completed. So whatever the board wants to do, the applicant will comply.
Mr. Chairman, I, I whispered in mics here. Thank you. David's here, that maybe, that maybe what we should do is schedule this again for the first meeting in March, which is beyond 50 days.
Exactly.
And either at that point, Mr. O'Grohanek will be back with a full application, or Mr. O'Grohanek will be back here with another explanation of where are we as of the first meeting in March.
Because March 2nd.
Because obviously, there's no sense coming before 50 days, because we know that they won't have an answer, and probably won't have one in 60 days.
Makes sense to push that a little further?
Wheels of DOT justice move slowly, so we understand.
This is just the driveway extension for United Rental, which was really a concession for having his support.
And oh, by, and oh, by the way, we need an extension on time of decision, or we're going to turn the application down, because tonight's the time of decision.
Yes, we also like that extended to the March 2nd, 2017.
At this point, if, if we think DOT decision is fairly imminent, and 50 days is actually their landscape, fairly imminent, I would just recommend we... Well, we're talking now about 75 to 80. Yeah, I think March is, I think March makes sense. Yeah. So we would ask Mr. O'Grohanek for an extension on the time of decision through March 31st.
Yeah.
And that your client would, either you and/or your client will be here on March the 2nd with an application, or with a, where are we now?
Yeah, I intend to bring the traffic engineer.
And we're going to, whenever, if we go forward, it will be with notice, so.
Yeah, that's...
Plan accordingly, yep.
All right, so we extend to March, March 2nd?
March 2nd hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Meeting with the TOD of March 31st?
With renotice.
With renotice. We have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. You got that?
Yeah, I got it. Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Julian?
Yes.
Mr. Sarachi?
Yes.
Mr. Delcor?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Ms. Beckarina?
Yes.
Chairman Lepani?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hope you feel better.
Thanks.
All right, so in your, there's no other correspondence in your packets, so at this point, we have our next meeting would be the reorg meeting, January 5th, 2017, at 7 o'clock?
7 o'clock.
And then a regular meeting at 7:30.
All right, here we have...
Anusi.
The Anusi application on the 5th.
Correct.
Right.
And you have that packet with you, with the updated material, and also they're still due to go in front of the EC.
Correct.
Before that time.
Looking forward from there, January 12th, it looks like we will have Van Cleve HRC Associates. It's a project down at the Van Cleve campus, and a new off, a new building for the record club and some other extensions of their existing buildings. January 26th is the business meeting that's open. February 6th, now we have Levatino and Green Village, and then we're open again until March 2nd, where we have potentially Chris Mc... So that's how your schedule plays out from here on out.
Yeah, it's going to be perfect.
For the time being, yes.
Okay. I'd like to just make one little point of order. A member on the board, Mr. Sam Conner, is not here, because he was having surgery, which is unfortunate, because actually, his, his time on the board is expiring at the end of this year, and he will, is moving on and retiring, so he will not be back to the board. And I would just like to thank Mr. Conner for all the years of service he's given to this board and the other boards in Hillsborough, and his, his guidance and wisdom will surely be missed with us. Mr. Chairman, it has been the practice of this board in the past to give letters of commendation to longstanding members of the board, and if the board so desires, I'm assuming the planning department can put one together for Mr. Conner, and then you can all decide when you want to have him come and present it to him. I think we did, didn't we do two early, I thought we did two earlier at the year for a couple of the board members?